We have one agenda topic tonight, and that is the legislative agenda for 2013. Suzanne Dale SD will be presenting. Suzanne?
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. I'm Suzanne Dale SD, Economic Development Director here at the city, and I also help manage the city's government relations. And eventually, he's not here yet, but he will be walking in probably while I'm faced forward, we'll have with us our Government Relations Consultant Doug Levy, who's probably sitting in traffic on 405, which I might be mentioning as part of our legislative agenda. Doug, as you all know, but for our viewing audience, we have a consultant who does really an outstanding job representing our city on the ground in Olympia during the legislative session and really throughout the year. So it's that time of the year, again, my seventh time saying this to the Renton City Council, and it's time when we brace ourselves for the next legislative session and also prepare so that we can accomplish some good things for our community. The next session starts on January 14th, and it will be a long 105-day session, and we anticipate it concluding April 28th with special sessions thereafter as needed based on budget negotiations. I think you all probably are well aware that the legislature has been dealing with really severe shortfalls for several years now. I was looking back at notes, and the 2009 session was when they faced a $9 billion hole for the two-year biennium. They had a little bit of federal money, but still had a tremendous problem. This year's projected deficit, and this is an all-in figure including rainy day and reserves, is about $900 million. So the new Senate Republican leader said last week, "Isn't it nice to be talking about millions rather than billions?" But there's still a very, very significant challenge with the structural budget gap that we're familiar with here at the local level. And the $900 million, though, is in addition to an approximately billion-dollar challenge to address the McCleary Supreme Court decision requiring adequate -- hi Doug, I introduced you -- adequate funding for education. So that could be in the ballpark of a billion dollars or more. We anticipate seeing a proposed budget from the sitting governor the week of December 14th or so. The deadline for her proposed budget, so the first of three and perhaps four budgets, is December 21st. As far as the makeup of the legislature, it's been kind of down to the wire with a couple of recounts. There's still one race that's very close in the Senate, but it appears, at least the media's starting to report, that the Democrats have a 26 to 23 edge. But that is a deceiving number, because two Democrats have publicly indicated they're interested in working with the Republicans. So the conversations are now unfolding about how the Senate will actually operate. The new Senate Majority Leader, Ed Murray, has indicated that he would rather have a functioning Senate than be a Majority Leader. So conversations are unfolding, and it will be very interesting to see how that shakes out. The Democrats did make several overtures to the Republicans with their committee leadership assignments that they announced last week. In the House, it looks like, and this is also still solidifying, but I have a 55 to 45 edge.
Forty-three.
Forty-three. So at least one race is still in flux. And actually, looking back, I wanted to mention, when I was looking back at my notes from my tenure here, there was a point when the Senate had a majority of 31 to 18, and the House had a majority of 61 to 37. So it's getting tighter, and some would say that there's hope that the legislature will govern from the middle, but we'll see. Of course, the biggest change, and then the resulting wave of staff and agency transition is that there'll be a new governor, Governor-elect Inslee. And we are all proud that his new Chief of Staff is our own Renton School District Superintendent, Mary Alice Hushel. I was able to see her give her first speech with the Governor-elect last night, and she's doing a great job. Only basically had to say happy holidays, so it wasn't too hard. So he is, the Governor-elect is focused on his transition, has three co-chairs of a transition team, about 34 members have been appointed, and they'll have teams focused on K-12, higher education, clean energy and the environment, economy and jobs, and transportation, starting to work with the Governor-elect to hammer out his budget proposals and priorities and legislative priorities. So that gives you a sense of the lay of the land. I always like to make sure that the first attention is called to our legislative delegation. And we have, once again, this session, an outstanding legislative delegation. We're down to four districts rather than we've had five for most of the recent, for all of the recent years and all of my time here. As you can see, that while the House Committee Leadership assignments are still in flux, and they're likely to land about what you see here, but it's not official yet. The members I've talked with in recent days have indicated they think that they've got their previous positions solidified, but it's not official. But even with those assignments in the Senate and in House leadership that are solidified, to have three members of House leadership within just 12 of our legislators is pretty phenomenal. And then we have several key committee assignment chairmanships as well. Our delegation works tirelessly for us, and they carry different issues depending on their committee assignments. Some are really more helpful behind the scenes with the Rules Committee or walking sponsorship sheets around that sort of thing. But we have had just a tremendous kind of team effort, and we've been very grateful for that. I also wanted to point out, primarily for the viewing audience, that our legislative efforts extend well beyond the city's legislative agenda. Of course, we work with city associations, suburban cities, AWC, but here in Renton, we have set ourselves apart by working very, in a very unified way, with the major entities in our community, the Chamber, Valley Medical Center, Renton School District, and Renton Technical College. We have joint receptions, and then we've typically had conference calls every two weeks during session and a monthly lunch, and several of you have participated in those through the years. We really appreciate that. And it does, as simple as it sounds, it does set us apart and keep us focused on common priorities, and it pays off on the ground in Olympia. I also wanted to thank the mayor and members of the council in advance for your participation in these efforts, whether it's coming to one of the brown bag lunches or coming to the AWC Cities Legislative Action Conference. We really appreciate your participation. And I wanted to ask you to mark your calendars. The Association of Washington City's Legislative Action Conference is February 13th through the 14th, and then we typically go down for a Renton Lobby Day the day before that. Moving toward, just walking through the proposed 2013 state legislative agenda, just to briefly highlight how it's formatted, and this has been the case for a few years here, I sometimes refer to our priority issues as the placemat. So our top priorities, this is really where we ask our legislators to focus. And then we also have a second tier, still very relevant issues. We try to anticipate issues that will come up through the legislative session, and that's our statement of policy positions, and that's an insert within our priority issues. Within statement of policy, we have support and oppose positions, and then some issues that we're just tracking and monitoring in case you are asked or others are asked what our position is. We try to work with the council and make sure that that's well-established so that we're not scrambling. Sometimes it's a very short period of a couple hours when we have to have the city's position on House Bill 1241 or what have you, and we try to avoid that as much as possible so we can be effective. As far as our basic premises, and these are very consistent with policies established by the council through the years, they're pretty self-explanatory, but we're looking for maximum local flexibility. We're opposing unfunded mandates, so where we're given a responsibility but not adequate funding to carry it out. We are also very focused on maintaining our local control in areas such as land use and zoning, taxation, and rights of way management. So those are sort of drumbeats that you'll consistently hear from most cities, and particularly our city as we evaluate proposed legislation. And then we're also focused just on a premise level at ensuring that basic services are maintained. So while the state makes an effort to balance its budget, that the local impacts of those reductions are considered, particularly as we all survived and got through the recession period, the cuts in the Health and Human Services arena where we don't have a direct responsibility, but we see the impact on members of the community, is an area that we have kind of elevated our language in talking about what the city's priorities are. We're working, and I'll talk more about it, but in the context of our basic premises, we ask legislators to support state preservation of state shared revenues, and we also, and I think we've been somewhat upfront in this, have really encouraged creative approaches to providing cities with, you know, we're willing to perhaps work with the state to not take on a responsibility if we're relieved of that responsibility. So it's an area where we've really wanted to have creative approaches defining efficiencies. And then we also have worked for and encouraged, you know, it's always a balance, but working for regulatory reform, easing liability burdens where it's appropriate. One note on here is the McCleary decision, and the agenda doesn't address it at great length, but that is a huge issue in the financial climate, again, as the legislature is, has been directed by the Supreme Court to fully fund, adequately fund, basic K-12 education. So we have, in the state agenda priority issues, we have five top priorities. We do tuck a few things under each of those major categories, but they're very consistent with agendas from the past. There's a little bit of shifting this year, but the first and top priority and has been so during my whole tenure here is transportation solutions. And we've made some good progress. We've been focusing for many years, and several of you have spent a lot of time on this issue of continuing to address our challenges with traffic congestion, and it's really not just at 405, but at being the crossroads of a number of different highways here in Renton. We've been focusing in particular on 405 from Renton to Bellevue and the 167 405 connector, which, both of which are, if not the most congested, certainly very close to being the most congested interchange and corridor in the state. So with regard to 405, our message here is that we really need both tolling and express toll lanes and new revenue, so some sort of revenue package. And we have consistently supported, as a city, statewide efforts for additional funding for transportation infrastructure. Those aren't quite as organized through the Transportation Partnership, which was a business labor local government coalition. I think it may be reemerging. We're seeing leadership coming out of Washington Roundtable. But where there are statewide efforts, particularly focused on the economic imperative, infrastructure needs, we've been supportive of those. And with regard to the need for both, it's really a bottom line, that it appears from the financial analyses to date that you can't fully fund the $1.5 billion of needs from Renton to Bellevue with just toll revenues. So we really need both a state revenue package that includes 405 as well as the express authority, so the overt authority for express toll lanes on Renton to Bellevue. The legislature has authorized that tolling tool for Bellevue to Linwood, and we'll need a specific vote out of the legislature to move forward with the segment on this end. And in addition to that, we're also looking for ways, and this is by no means low-hanging fruit, but the lowest hanging fruit of trying to fund 405 is to work with the legislature as we have successfully in the last session to capture savings along that corridor as they are proceeding with the corridor. And so the next step, we were able to work with in particular House Transportation Chair Judy Cliburn, who has been outstanding to this end, on capturing some of that savings, $40 million, which is being invested in the design and engineering and property acquisition for the connector between 167 and 405. The next step in that effort would be a $65 million. It's very hard to chunk up this corridor, but that would be the next investment that we are very clearly asking for. But again, we'd really like to see the corridor fully funded, and we're participating in regional and statewide efforts to that end. There are lots of transportation needs in our community well beyond 405, as you all know, and we have been working, and the mayor has been working quite aggressively in a number of different, sometimes long and painful meetings, working with other cities, King County. It's becoming a statewide conversation on local transportation funding options. We worked on that last session. We would like to see the vehicle license fee be increased from $20 to $40, just as a tool. It's not a decision we're asking you all to make tonight, but to increase the tools in the toolbox for funding our local transportation needs. In addition to that, you'll see the plus there, it's really critical as a statewide revenue package is passed, that if there is an increase in the gas tax, that cities and counties continue to receive a direct distribution of that gas tax. So that's the reference there. With regard to other specific projects within the city, we've been, and our Public Works Department has done an outstanding job of pursuing TIB, Transportation Improvement Board funds, for our local projects. And that may be the direction we're headed with the Northeast Sunset Boulevard project. There's a TIB question mark. If there is a revenue package and there's an opportunity to list more localized projects, we will most certainly pursue that $3 million in the Sunset area where we're making great economic development and community revitalization progress. But we may be wanting to pursue that through TIB. We're just talking specifically about that corridor, because it's kind of the next request for the Sunset area, having, coming off the heels of making significant progress with stormwater funding and housing funding in that area. And then you'll see that as the revenue package unfolds, we're very interested in funding for Transportation Improvement Board, as I mentioned, community trip reduction, and there's a program called Complete Streets that helps cities make corridors more transit and pedestrian-friendly. We think that could be a very useful tool on the number of state routes that run through our city, but really throughout our city, as we are making efforts toward that end but don't always have the funding to do so. So that is transportation, number one. The second of our top five priorities is fiscal stability. Again, a consistent theme in the past, Renton, like many cities, has been forced to make significant reductions. So as you all know all too well, we have shrunk this government in recent years by about 15%, despite growing in population, that should say, but I didn't have enough room on the PowerPoint, by 56% in recent years. So what we're trying to do here is make sure that our, not just our legislators, but other constituencies in Olympia, interest groups, even our own partners here in the community, understand that as the state considers reductions, we have already taken severe reductions here at the local level. And then we also, of course, talk in our agenda about what I mentioned before, which is the disproportionate impact of Health and Human Services cuts, as we have had a higher percentage of families above, or excuse me, below the poverty line in our community. So a few of the specific requests you'll see here, the state shared revenues I mentioned earlier, restoring, there's a $10 million, and it was a little tricky and a little muddied toward the end of the session, but it was a transfer in the state shared revenues, the liquor excise tax distribution for cities and counties. So a $10 million shift that occurred where, at that point in time, October of next year, those funds would be swept into the State General Fund. So that's an area where we're working with cities and counties across the state to indicate that our public safety responsibilities have by no means decreased, and in fact, they've increased, and we need adequate revenue to carry out those duties. Secondly is public records relief and cost recovery. And to this end, I want to be clear for the public that the city by no means wants to hinder its efforts to be transparent and open with members of the community. We strongly support the public's right to obtain public records, and we try very, very hard to abide by the law in a very transparent way. But what we're talking about here and are engaging with a number of entities, by no means are we tackling this issue on our own, the ports, school districts, cities, counties, there are a number of entities trying to strike that balance of being responsible transparent governments, but also starting to address the fact that we do have some requests that are extremely onerous and potentially harassment-related. Some of them come from out of state, and we're looking for tools to continue to carry out our duties without some of these more extreme cases making that difficult to do so. We won't be talking with legislators about the fact that we have a full FTE, a full-time person in the police department, for example, just dealing with public records requests. And it does make being an efficient local government difficult. We're also looking for ways that we could recoup some of those costs for the gamut of public records responsibilities, and we're working with associations in an effort to do so. And then finally, under fiscal stability is the issue of indigent defense for misdemeanor court cases. And as I think most of you are probably aware, in June of this year, the State Supreme Court adopted a rule that dramatically reduces the number of misdemeanor and indigent defense cases any one public defender can take on. So what we're asking for here, and again, this is one where we're working in coalition with cities across the state, we're asking for model standards and for flexibility to be able to carry out our duties. I will say, on both public records front and indigent defense, that there is not consensus in Olympia, and I think both of these are going to be significant issues that we'll need to be working with AWC on throughout the session, and hopefully we can make some level of progress. The third of the top five priority issues in our state legislative agenda is economic development and infrastructure investment. Renton has had a longstanding commitment to looking for and supporting policies that help us retain and create jobs and using infrastructure funding in order to catalyze economic development. And so we'll be continuing to do so, working through the State Economic Development Association, AWC does quite a bit in this arena, and a number of other stakeholders, including the business community, to support legislation that allows for increased economic competitiveness within our community. In particular, we are focusing this year, and the shift that I referred to earlier in our top five priorities, is that this was a standalone item, and we just moved it into economic development. It's continuing to focus, as we have been for a few years here, on the city's aerospace economic development strategy. In particular, we'll be working with the Aerospace Futures Alliance, the Washington Aerospace Partnership, the King County Aerospace Alliance, there's a number of entities with similar goals to ours. And as bills and budget opportunities arise that encourage growth of the aerospace industry, we'll be looking to support those or perhaps oppose legislation that would hinder that growth of the aerospace industry. You'll also see in the state legislative agenda document that there's a number of metrics about the Boeing 737, the most popular jet, as you all know, in the history of flight. Again, just some efforts to use this document to help people learn about the import of aerospace to our community, among the many sectors that are a priority for the community. The second request, and I want to be very, very clear, crystal clear on this one, this request came from Industry. So Industry came to us and indicated, wow, we really appreciate, and we, the city, very much appreciate the legislator's, legislature's efforts to appropriate $2.5 million for a Renton aerospace training center in the capital budget last year. And as you all know, we were very appreciative of that appropriation. However, I think that it's the feeling of Industry that this is an incredible opportunity, and the location where we are targeting this particular aerospace training center at the airport is such a phenomenal location. And the feeling was, from Industry, that we should be looking for this to be a world-class facility, and also for it to encompass not just Renton Technical College coursework, but opportunities for K-12, to really engage young people in the opportunity to work in this sector and to ignite that future generation of aerospace workers. So we are working with a number of people, and this coalition has grown as the mission has grown of this, what is now being called the Central Sound Aerospace Training Center. And so actually, I need to update, so there'll be, if I could ask, a few friendly amendments to the agenda document, because I haven't taken out Puget. That was an email dialogue throughout the weekend of a number of stakeholders from the Technical College to Industry, to our airport staff. And that's just a tentative name, it's not necessarily where we'll end up. If we got some significant donor, of course, there might be an interest in changing that name. But the idea is to grow the mission beyond just Renton. A number of community colleges will likely be involved, and it's just a terrific opportunity both for Renton but also for the aerospace sector here in Renton with Boeing and our supply chain, but also well beyond suppliers throughout the region. There's about 440 just here in King County alone. So that's a capital budget request. I think one thing that I didn't mention at the beginning, in the context of the state's financial climate, we don't have an operating budget request proposed here at this time. We still believe that it's not the time with the state's structural budget gap to make those operating requests, but we have been successful at leveraging the capital budget to help our community. And again, just one final emphasis is that this is a support item. It is in our priority issues, but we'll be following the lead of Boeing and suppliers, the Aerospace Futures Alliance, and other entities in pursuit of this significant level of funding out of the capital budget. The fourth of our top four priority issues in the state legislative agenda is public safety. Consistent with the legislative agenda from last year, we were able to work with the legislature, and I seem to, this seems to be a recurring theme, but much of our work is in coalition with a number of cities. And this is addressing issues of youth violence and gang violence. We were able to work with the legislature to help establish a fund, and the fund was established with $250,000 focused on prevention and intervention strategies as part of a comprehensive strategy to address gang violence. We would like to see creative funding tools, perhaps through fees or otherwise, added to help supplement that fund, and would like to work with the jurisdictions in South King County and the King County Prosecutor's Office. There's a number of different workgroups in this arena to try to obtain some of that funding for programs here in our community. And then the fifth and new item in our major priorities this year is enhancing quality of life. And again, it's kind of a catch-all with some language at the beginning, really talking about the value of quality of life, and that could include if there are budget proposals related to arts and culture. We have sometimes taken a position on bills related to farmers' markets. In particular, there's a coalition effort called Healthy and Sustainable Communities, and they're working to strengthen public health and combat obesity, not just through government programs, but through efforts to help complete streets, to look at safe routes to schools, the trails programs. It's really a comprehensive effort to help enhance quality of life in our community. And Renton has very much prioritized that for many years. It has not been a top-five priority in our legislative agenda, so I'm excited that this is a new addition. We also have one particular capital request. So this is the second capital request and the only that we're really championing as the city, and that's a million-dollar request for Riverview Park, which I'm sure you all are familiar with, but quickly for our viewing audience, it's a pedestrian bridge there at Riverview Park which connects to the Cedar River Trail, which stretches 17 miles from Lake Washington to Maple Valley. And the pedestrian bridge has been damaged by floods. It has captured woody debris on the Cedar River that then becomes a problem further down the river. There are creosote log, creosote-covered logs in this area, and it's just not at the caliber that we would like to see as part of our parks and recreation and facilities programs. And so we think, although we wouldn't typically pursue parks funding in the state capital budget, we think that there are some extenuating circumstances because of the flood damage. budget, we think that there are some extenuating circumstances because of the flood damage, that we can hopefully be successful in securing these funds for Riverview Park.
Good request.
I won't walk through the statement of policy in detail. You have that, it's available on the city's website for our viewing audience, there are copies here in the back of the room. Just wanted to highlight, very briefly, a few items of note. Always want to repeat, protection of our criminal justice and courts funding is a priority. We are seeking clarity for regulating the use of marijuana with initiative that has just passed in the state. There is not a clear authority for local government to regulate marijuana. And the statement is pretty high-level. We aren't exactly sure if there will be proposals in Olympia. We're also looking for federal action to establish that clarity, but we wanted to have a statement in the statement of policy that that's what we're seeking, so that we can effectively regulate, as appropriate for a local government to do so. There's a few items proposing to strengthen penalties in metal theft, and there's a particular issue with the brass fittings on some of our fire protection devices, our equipment that has been, that equipment, our pieces of equipment have been stolen, and it can be very, very costly for our fire and emergency services department. And then in the vehicle prowls space, we're looking to increase penalties for repeat offenses, up to a felony. An economic development item that's in here that I wanted to mention is the local revitalization financing tool. It's been two or three years, but as you'll recall, we did, and this is the LRF that's in the PowerPoint, we were able to secure the local revitalization financing tool for both South Lake Washington and Port Quendale. And all in, that could capture up to about $30 million of infrastructure investment in total for those two areas. This is a tool that would require bonding and many discussions that we would have with you in the future, but we're looking to preserve that tool in case there is economic gain that we can then capture and get more money from the state in order to pay for our infrastructure here in Renton. So for the purposes of this session, we're looking to preserve that tool. We're the only city in the state that obtained LRF for two areas of our community. There's a statement of policy item in support of the Washington Technology Cities Coalition, and I just wanted to highlight that because it's interesting, particularly as I talk so much about the aerospace sector. Of course, we have many interesting technology companies in our community, and we consider, really, aerospace is technology-oriented as well. And this is a coalition that's being organized primarily by the city of Redmond, and we have been participating. Their priorities will primarily focus on the education and infrastructure spaces, where we have lots of commonality with our existing legislative agenda. The idea is to recognize the import of technology to our city's economies, and it's a coalition of cities that have technology as a key sector. The fish consumption rate issue, I wanted to mention real quickly. This is very important to some of our major employers in the community, and it's a very technical issue. The State Department of Ecology, I'm such a junkie for this stuff, I watched a hearing on TVW over the weekend. The State Department of Ecology is going through a second and very technical process. I'm looking at the amount of fish consumption that consumers, an amount of fish that consumers consume, and whether or not our rates are too low. If those rates are established at a considerably higher level, and there have been proposals to go even above the federal level, that will require significant investment in water quality, retroactive, so potentially multimillion-dollar impacts to at least one of our major employers in the community, and also to the city. It's an issue of concern, it's an issue of concern for our taxpayers if wastewater treatment rates go up. So it's an issue that we will be, again, in sort of a second-tier support role, but watching very carefully, because it is a high priority to some of our major employers.
Mr. Chair. Can I get just a little more clarification on that? So is it that if people are eating more fish, then the concern of contaminants increases? Is that because they're consuming more contaminants? Is that what we're saying? I was just trying to find the link.
So I think it's about a six grams level that is the assumption right now of fish per week.
Right. So if you're picking up heavy metals or something from the fish, and you're eating a lot more fish than they thought, then...
The perspective is that that isn't adequately reflecting what we are consuming, and so if you were to increase it, that yes, water quality would have to improve.
Okay, meaning that permits have to be more expensive, because more actions would have to be taken. I get it.
Or significant improvements to the wastewater treatment would have to be implemented.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, since I stopped the flow of the presentation, can I ask you a couple other questions?
Of course.
Yeah, and this is maybe as much of a statement as anything, but the clarity for regulating use of marijuana, I'm intrigued, you know, and I think it's going to take a while for the state and the federal government to sort that out. But I did think that we're quickly probably going to have to deal with zoning issues, and curious, you know, what conversation they'll have with the state with that. I remember when gambling had gotten incrementally more legal, and all of a sudden, we had three applications before we even had time to talk about the zoning that went with that. And then, you know, I know in the past, when we've, some establishments, the liquor board has said, hey, you can't decide, you know, that's our jurisdiction. It's hard to know what's going to happen with marijuana, but it seems like we would want to be quick about recognizing people might want to come in and have places where it's for sale, and we might want to get in front of that.
Absolutely, and this is a hot issue. The Association of Washington Cities just held a briefing that Doug participated in, a number of city attorneys. Our city attorney's office is plugged in, the police chief is plugged in. And you can see that, at this point, we have high level of language that does mention that our interests are to clarify our zoning authority.
Okay, good, yeah.
And if there are collective gardens, what that cap is, on how many collective gardens there could be, and that we should be able to impose bans that are consistent with the needs of our community.
Okay.
So it's pretty consistent with themes on other fronts, where we're looking for local control, but this is a unique one, where the state and federal environment is not entirely in sync, and it may be some time before that's the case.
Good, okay, thanks.
Of course. So just wrapping up, a few issues that I wanted to highlight real quick. Workforce development is a section, and this was added a few years ago in our statement of policy, recognizing that our education system is indeed a part of our workforce development, and indeed our economic development, and that we need not just funding, but accountability. So as the funding conversation unfolds, there's some language in here that we want to make sure that it's an accountable system, and that the degree, the diploma actually means something. And then we have had a consistent position of opposing a county-wide utility tax, but supporting an unincorporated area utility tax. There are a few, not as many as we've had in some years, a few proposals in the employee services arena, and we will be working primarily with the Association of Washington Cities on those. I wanted to flag one issue where we're looking for flexibility with lodging taxes, and we'll be working with the Chamber of Commerce to preserve funding for the Renton Visitors Center, which is a high priority for the whole community. And then finally, I wanted to flag, particularly as there have been recent public hearings about potential cuts from Metro in order to potentially fund the extension of the F-line up to the Landing and the Boeing plant, I wanted to make clear that ahead of any potential cuts to existing routes would be, one, that we're successful, hopefully, in securing long-term funding streams for transit and roads as part of that local options transportation discussion that I referenced. And then, two, a second, there's a sort of a three-tiered strategy here. The second strategy is supporting, we already have, actually, King County Metro applied for the grant, but we are supporting a grant for regional mobility funding for that F-line extension. It's referenced in here, it's really more of a process through the State Department of Transportation, but ultimately, the list of projects will be passed by the legislature. So we wanted to make sure that our legislators knew that we have been working with Metro for that $2.8 million in funding to get the F-line extended as part of service being rolled out next fall. So that is a quick glossary of statement of policy, because there's a lot of issues in here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, or to turn to my most excellent and trusted partner in government relations efforts, Doug Levy, as needed.
Questions from the council? Mr. Prince?
Suzanne, Doug, have you guys heard anything at all? I know that Governor Gregoire is coming out with her budget proposal soon, and it's either going to be two books or three books, depending on who you talk to. Have you heard of anything that will have an impact on cities as far as unfunded mandates that we're going to have to react to, or something like the annexation tax credit last year that we had to react to?
I'll just make a high-level answer, and Doug can feel free to elaborate. You know, of course, we haven't seen those budget proposals, but there have been lots of conversations between the governor herself and leaders of the Association of Washington Cities, and then we have lots of conversations. We view, at this point, no threat to the annexation assistance credit program, and I didn't mention that. The goal is to preserve that, really, now that the West Hill vote has occurred, to preserve that existing funding for the Cascade Bend scenario, to make sure that we hold on to the program. There were 72 legislators, some significant number of legislators, who took a very firm stance that they were not interested in even entertaining a reduction to that annexation assistance program. And so we feel like we're pretty well-positioned. We don't foresee a proposal coming out of the governor's office, but of course, we'll feel more confident once we see that proposal in black and white. And, you know, I think the biggest funding question will be if we can get that $10 million restored, and that will probably be a legislative process. But I'm not aware of any significant budget proposals that would dramatically impact cities. Doug, do you want to elaborate at all?
Councilmember Prince, I think the other big thing we need to watch is the governor, in her budget, if she is going to, if she's going to work within the existing set of revenues the state has, there's a distinct possibility she'll look to the capital budget in shifting some things out of the capital budget and into the operating budget. So that means programs that cities rely on, like the Public Works Trust Fund or the Model Toxic Control Act, could be significantly impacted. I would say here in Renton, we're probably a little more safeguarded than some other communities. We're not as frequent a user of the trust fund, we're not as frequent a user of the MACHA accounts, but that's something we really need to watch for. Are there going to be efforts to, in essence, raid the capital budget and move funds over the operating budget to meet this McCleary decision mandate, which the Supreme Court is telling the state, over the next five years, it should be doing about $5 billion more in investment for the K-12 system?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, if I may, yeah, just circling back, one other item you mentioned, I think it was Ingenious's request, the help with that pedestrian bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And I was trying to remember, is that the State Department of Fisheries that put all that woody debris, is that the county?
We've been dealing with King County primarily on the woody debris issue, to my knowledge.
Okay, okay. And, you know, I don't know how much of the, I mean, I know some of this is age-related, and it's probably that woody debris didn't have a lot to do with it, but I do know that it was dramatic what had to be done to deal with that. So it wasn't just wood, but the fact that they were chaining the pieces together with logging chains, and then, you know, what a hazard once it gets picked up by the floods. So anyways, I'm glad you're doing that, and I wish you well with that. It seems worthwhile.
I might mention quickly, Councilmember Cornyn, one of the things we thought would be, you know, to the city's advantage in applying for this, it's actually, it would be an earmark request. Typically, for these types of parks projects, you go through one of a few different competitive grant programs, and because of the flood damage, we thought that was something that stood out as a reason for the legislature to possibly earmark some money here. I would add that, you know, our parks folks have applied for some grant funding in the past, did the due diligence, came close to, but didn't quite get over the line getting awarded some funds. So if we get the question, have you worked the competitive grant angles, we'll be able to say that we have. So we think there's a couple reasons we can be competitive here. No guarantees, but something we think is worth asking.
Good, yeah.
Derek?
How soon will you know the committee chairs, since I know there's a lot of changes this year?
So the Senate has been established.
Okay.
As far as the Democrats and then the Senate leadership on both sides of the aisle. And then the House, Representative Maxwell told me last night it would be this week, but she didn't have a definitive date, so I think very soon.
I think that's right. I think, Councilmember Brier, I would want to reemphasize what Suzanne said very early in her presentation. We think we know the chairs of the Senate committees. If there is, you know, a negotiation between the Democrats and the Republicans on how they share control, it's possible you could have two Ways and Means chairs, or you could have two transportation chairs. We just don't know yet, and I was with a senator earlier this afternoon who said, frankly, we may not know until the first or second week in January. So the Senate becomes a real wild card. The House is, I think, going to be more predictable, and as Suzanne said, we'll probably get a list middle to end of this week.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Suzanne, on behalf of the Renton City Council, we want to thank you for your tireless efforts and our behalf, and your fabulous presentation tonight, and thank you, Doug, for being here. And we'll ask you to stay just a moment after I adjourn the meeting, because we have a little something for you.
Uh-oh.
So with that, I'll adjourn the committee of the whole meeting, and that's that.